Good evening. Good evening. This is the Thursday, September 26th, monthly meeting of the Henrico County Public School Board. First item is to approve the agenda. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda as their motion to approve the agenda is presented.
So moved, Ms. Jemmin.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Auger. And all those in favor in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved as presented. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. And to our audience, good evening. We will begin this evening's meeting, as we always do, with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you would please stand, we'll have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. And this begins our moment of silence, which may be used by those in attendance for personal reflection, prayer, or meditation. And that concludes our moment of silence. I'll now have Mandy Mulholland, principal of Springfield Park Elementary, come and introduce students who will be leading us in the pledge.
Good evening. Tonight from Springfield Park, we have 4th grader Molly Hartwell, our SCA Vice President, 5th grader Paige Ivy, our SCA reporter, Damian Wisnet, 5th grade SCA President, and Amon Ritter, 5th grade SCA Treasurer.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with equal.
To greet our students. Good to see you again. And as our Board members are making their way to the front where we'll be seated for our performance highlight, I would like to introduce some visitors who are with us this evening. We have Mrs. Carrie Humphrey and her American Sign Language and Interpreter Education Class from J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College with us this evening. And they're joining us in the back of the auditorium. If you all want to wave, we're pleased to have you joining us. They are here to practice their interpreting skills, and we are delighted to have them with us this evening. And so without further ado, I'm going to make my way to the front as we have our performance highlight, followed by some recognitions.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, guests, and colleagues, it is my pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening, the JR Tucker High School Drum Line, under the direction of Mr. Austin Frank. Mr. Frank is in his 3rd year teaching and his 2nd year with us in Henrico at JR Tucker. He has already grown the program during his short time here. He is a member of the National Association for Music Educators, Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association, Virginia Music Educators Association, and Phi Mu Alpha Symphonia Male Music Fraternity. The JR Tucker Band is a five-time Virginia Honor Band that has a longstanding tradition of excellence, and they've won numerous awards and accolades over the years. Tonight, we have in attendance their very proud principal, Mr. Art Raymond. Please be recognized. And now, please help me welcome to the stage the JR Tucker High School Drum Line.
Before we move on to the next thing, Chris, everybody, this is our new head of all things music here in the county, and he's replaced, to the degree that anybody could, Rick Tinsley. And everybody knows that Rick wore the most colorful clothes. And so Chris went, he said, "I can't beat him in color, but I can outclass him," I suppose. So from now on, you're going to be a tux every school board meeting, right? Okay. Well, very good. So tonight, I have the great honor of recognizing, and our first recognition of the night, and I'd ask you to give, join me in giving a warm welcome to Jennifer McDonough and the Project Search team as they come forward. So would y'all come down, please? And I want the other ladies that are with you to come forward too. And as they do so, I just want to introduce them. So first, Jennifer is the VCU Project Director for Project Search, and y'all get to stand along here and be awkward while I read these things about you. She's joined by Alyssa Brook, who is the VCU Site Coordinator. Everybody, so we'll know who's who. There we go. Thank you. Kathy Lamitas, thank you very much, Kathy. Melanie Crocker. Kathy is the HCPS Project Search Coordinator, and Melanie is HCPS Transition Coordinator. And Madeline Donovan, yes, and she is the VCU Employment Specialist. So let me just tell you, if you're not familiar with the amazing work that these folks do, let me just tell you a little bit about it. You're looking at some very special people who dedicate, who have dedicated their careers to the advancement of others. Those who see it up close tell us that they're, that they've watched in awe as Jennifer and the Project Search team change the lives of so many young people with disabilities. So what do they do? They create experiences and opportunities that help our students with special needs transition from school to adulthood. For example, the vocational and workplace soft skills that our students learn have led to many, perhaps most, if not all, Project Search graduates being offered employment upon completion of their program. Students have been hired at St. Mary's Hospital and other Henrico businesses, as well as our own School Nutrition Services Department. This program has been instrumental in helping our students and young adults find meaningful employment, with national statistics indicate how difficult it is for students with disabilities to find careers after leaving school. When we ask others to send in some additional notes of gratitude, we got so much in return. For example, Sharina Sewell, at the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services, said it's because of Jen's, quote, "integrity, collaborative nature, and grit" that Project Search has been so successful. So to Jen and the entire team, on behalf of Henrico County School Board, I'd like to formally convey our heartfelt appreciation for the work that you do and the wonderful things that you do for our families and our students. And I ask that you join me in thanking them for this great, great effort. I will tell you this, that although I have not been able to attend all of the completions and graduations from this program at St. Mary's Hospital when they've had it, the ones that I have been able to attend have touched me to my core, and it's been amazing and remarkable the work that they do. And we see in those of us who, those of you particularly, who have been in the schools and particularly as children and become young adults, and they transition out, it's difficult for students with, who do not have any impediments. And when these young people with these disabilities really have the confidence in the love of the people that they work for, to go out and be able to do the great things that you do, you know that these folks are doing the, doing the Lord's work. So we really appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. Tonight, the Henrico Education Foundation would like to give a special thank you to Dominion Energy and Faith Hooper. Faith, you want to come on down front with us? Faith is a 30-year employee with Dominion and was recently recognized for her volunteer work within the community. The honor included a $5,000 donation from Dominion to benefit a cause of her choice. After considering a variety of different options for the donation, she decided the funds could best be used helping students close to home. As a Verona High School alum, Faith wanted to make sure that every Blue Devils student had the basics they need to grow and bloom. Faith lives in the Verona community, and her daughter is also a graduate of Verona High School. The contribution from Dominion Energy to the Henrico Education Foundation was earmarked to support Verona High School and will provide a helping hand to ensure every student has access to basic hygiene items, school supplies, clothing, and other resources they need to be successful in school. Faith told me she wanted to inspire teens to feel good about themselves, and part of that is creating a food pantry that includes healthy snacks. She hopes to lead by example by helping those in need. Faith worked with the Henrico Education Foundation, the Henrico County Public Schools Department of Family and Community Engagement, and the Verona High School Administration to set up an Equal Opportunity for All Fund at the Foundation to support Verona High School students. We're grateful for Dominion Energy's support and for Faith's selection of Hef and Verona High School to be recipient of the donation. Faith, thank you for everything you do to strengthen our schools, and we really appreciate this that will help support our students at Verona. So if you would give me a hand, appreciation, thank you. First, did you want a photo, or how did you want to?
We should, we should. We just said, thank you, thank you, it's all around, right?
Yes.
So what's this about, 15, you mean, 15, you didn't have to say it. Okay. Well, thank you so much. Yeah. You can get us all. Thank you. You can get those. Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. It is a pleasure to invite Mills-Gowin High School's Coach Cody Johnson, Principal Lee Donovan, Activities Director Tom Nadeau, and members of the boys' soccer team Carter Morris and Artemi Bukun to come forward. The Mills-Gowin Boys Soccer Team finished the season with an 18-3 record, scoring 89 goals on the season. They had numerous players named All-Region, All-Metro, and All-State. Jen Kim was named the Regional Metro and State Player of the Year. Gowan Boys Soccer was the Virginia High School League 5A State Champions. Congratulations, Eagles. At this time, we invite Deep Run High School's Coach Maria Sorkin, Principal Brian Fellows, Director of Student Activities Michael Kidd, and members of the girls' tennis team Olivia Wright, Ashley Hare, Manachi Onukai, Katie Kim, and Manay Enters to come forward. We'll be presenting two awards to Deep Run High School tonight, so I would ask that our guests from Deep Run remain standing until both awards have been presented. The Deep Run Girls Tennis Team won both the Region 5B and VHSL Class 5 State Titles this year. Deep Run has won the state championship two years in a row and three of the last four years. The senior class is the winningest in the school's history, having a record of 87 wins and one loss. Congratulations on these tremendous accomplishments. Deep Run High School also won the 2018-2019 Virginia High School League Wells Fargo Cup. This is the third year in a row that the school has won this prestigious award. The Wells Fargo Cup is the highest award given by the VHSL. It goes to the school in each classification that has achieved the best overall record in VHSL state-level competition in 27 sports. The cup represents the state champion's state champion. Congratulations to all our student athletes, parents, coaches, and the administration at Deep Run High School.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests, I'm very pleased to introduce the new Principal of Springfield Park Elementary, Mrs. Tracy Spain. Mrs. Spain began her teaching career in Hanover County as an exceptional ed teacher at Pole Green and Mechanicsville Elementary Schools, and served in Chesterfield as a teacher at Bailey Bridge Middle School, and then in central office in the Professional Development Department. Mrs. Spain joined HCPS as an exceptional ed teacher at Holiday Elementary, moved into the resource teacher position, and has most recently been serving with distinction as the Associate Principal at Holiday. She received Master Degrees in Education and Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech, and has served as a VCU Faculty Advisor. Mrs. Spain is thrilled to be joining the outstanding Springfield Park team, and has been busy getting to know the students, staff, and families. Please join me in congratulating her on her appointment.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am excited to get started at Springfield Park and work with that community. I have brought with me this evening my husband, who has been my rock through this whole process, and I really appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Cashwell, members of the School Board, colleagues and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce secondary education appointments tonight. Mr. David Leith is the new Assistant Principal of Elko Middle School. Mr. Leith has a Bachelor's in Business Management from Five Towns College, a Master's in Education with endorsements in elementary, pre-K through 6, and special education, and an educational specialist degree from Liberty University. Mr. Leith has over 20 years of experience in elementary and middle school teaching students with learning disabilities and middle school math. Most recently, he was a 6th grade math teacher, administrative aide, and safety chair at Rolfe Middle School. Mr. Leith is so excited to start his leadership journey at Elko Middle School. Please join me in congratulating Mr. David Leith as the new Assistant Principal of Elko Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, School Board members, citizens, and community members. Thank you all for joining me in this great celebration. I could not be here without a chance and someone to believe in me. I have my wife here, my three boys, and of course, one of the greatest leaders that I've ever had the opportunity to serve under, and my former principal, Dr. Michael Jackson, who has pushed me to believe in myself in a critical point in time when I stopped believing. I pressed forward, and I'm here today because of some wonderful people. I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for choosing me, Dr. Grant. I thank you all for this opportunity, and I promise I will not let HCPS down.
The newest Assistant Principal of Highland Springs High School is Mrs. Beth Terrier. She received her Bachelor's in Liberal Studies and endorsements in elementary, pre-K through 6, and middle school math from Longwood University, a Master's in Education Administration and Supervision from the University of Virginia. Ms. Terrier began her career as a middle school teacher in Henry County. She has taught math at Tuckahoe Middle, and most recently, at Homer Middle School. While at Homer, Ms. Terrier served as a mentor to new teachers, she worked with the LIF mentoring program, coached boys and girls soccer, served as a member of the school's leadership team, administrative aide, and led Homer's Impact Team. We are so very excited to have Mrs. Terrier join the staff at Highland Springs. She has already proven to be a great addition. Join me in congratulating Ms. Beth Terrier.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, Dr. Teigen, and Dr. Frel for this opportunity to serve the community of Highland Springs. I also would like to say thank you to my former principal, Dr. Brian Fellows, and my current principal, Mr. Ken White, for their continuous support and guidance in this journey. I have here with me tonight my husband, my daughter Kinsley, my son Brayden is back there, my mother-in-law Wendy, father-in-law Dwayne, brother-in-law Dale, and his wife Sammy, who is in her first year teaching at Springfield Park Elementary School. And thank you, Ms. Tracy, for being here as well. Thank you.
Chair Montgomery, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, and esteemed guests. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Zae Bodis for the position of School-Based Mental Health Supervisor. Dr. Bodis is a licensed clinical psychologist with over 10 years of experience providing direct clinical care, medical team consultations, and clinical supervision. She has extensive behavioral health systems of care experience, providing direct care and clinical supervision in residential, partial hospitalization, inpatient, outpatient, emergency department, and much more. Dr. Bodis has over eight years of experience providing care within integrated service delivery models. She transitions to us from the Virginia Treatment Center for Children Consultation and Liaison Service, where she served as the Lead Psychology and Therapy Supervisor. In addition, in her former role, she served as a Treatment Lead, Team Lead, and Therapy Supervisor for residential and day treatment programs. Dr. Bodis is a licensed clinical psychologist in the Commonwealth of Virginia. She completed a post-doctorate fellowship in psychology from the University of Maryland and holds a Doctorate of Philosophy from Virginia Tech. She also holds a Master of Science in Clinical Psychology from Virginia Tech, and a Master's of Art in Psychology, Applied Psychology, and Clinical Psychology from Mumbai University. It's my pleasure that I introduce Dr. Bodis.
Thank you for that very kind introduction. I'm, it's my privilege to be a part of Henrico County Public Schools. I'm sure all of you are familiar with this kind of a story, but when we moved to Richmond, to the Richmond area about 12 years ago, we decided to buy a house in Henrico County because we wanted our children to be a part of Henrico County Public Schools. I've spent the past 10 or 12 years of working with schoolchildren in various mental health settings, and I'm really looking forward to working now in the school setting with teachers and schools and school clinicians who are at the front lines of identifying children at risk for mental health issues. And thank you so much. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
It is my distinct honor, pleasure, and excitement to introduce the new Assistant Director of Career and Technical Education, Dr. William Crowder. Dr. Crowder received his Bachelor's of Science in Information and Systems from Virginia Commonwealth University. He received his Master of Ministry in 2005 from Colorado Theological Seminary. He received his Post-Master Certificate from George Washington University in 2010 with a major in Educational Leadership and Administration, and then Educational Specialist Degree in 2011. In 2013, he earned his Doctor of Education from Liberty University, and in 2015, he earned his Doctor of Philosophy from Colorado Theological Seminary. Dr. Crowder has worked for Citizens and Farmers Bank from 2000 from 2002 to 2004, when he graduated from VCU, at which time he decided to come back home to Henrico County and teach in the program where he was a student in Computer Systems Technology at the ACE Center at Howland Springs. From 2010 to 2012, he served as the Assistant Principal at Fairfield Middle School, and from 2012 to 2013, he served as the Associate Principal at Fairfield. Since 2013, he has served with distinction as the Principal of the Advanced Career Education Center at Howland Springs. Please join me in congratulating Dr. William Crowder as the new Assistant Director of Career and Technical Education.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell, school board, Dr. Tygen, Mr. Baton. Excited about this opportunity and truly looking forward to building more bridges for CTE and our county public school system. So I have my mom with me. I have my three sons that are 3 and under, William, Joseph, and Henry, my father-in-law Larry, my wife Julia, and my Associate Principal Jerry back there. So thank you so much. Looking forward to it.
Finally, I am pleased to introduce Adrian Cole Johnson as the next Director of Family and Community Engagement. Adrian, please stand up, would you? Mrs. Cole Johnson comes to us from the Peter Paul Development Center in Richmond's Church Hill, where she's served in multiple capacities since 2013, most recently as its Director of Family and Community Engagement. Mrs. Cole Johnson has an undergraduate degree from Old Dominion University, as well as a Master of Social Work degree from Washington University in St. Louis. She brings to us more than 15 years of professional experience in ensuring equitable opportunities and implementing robust engagement strategies in order to build nurturing environments. At Peter Paul, Mrs. Cole Johnson supervised the Engagement Department along with 20 team members involved in the Community Action Network, which brings together approximately 60 organizations and individuals to effect positive community change. She focused on partnerships and bridge-building to enhance the strategies that would support families in Richmond. She is a published writer in the Elementary School Journal, a panelist and panel moderator at four events in the past year, a 2019 graduate of Leadership Metro Richmond, and a 2018 honoree in Style Weekly's 40 Under 40. Adrian Cole Johnson, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you for the kind introduction, Andy. It felt so official. I'll have to say thank you, Dr. Cashwell, to the school board, the leadership team, and everyone that I met throughout the process of interviewing for the position. It's with great enthusiasm that I accept the Director of Family and Community Engagement position, and there's nothing that I enjoy more than working collaboratively with our parents, our families, community members, partners, and of course, school staff and administration to ensure that our youth are healthy, happy, and whole. I'm very excited about the position and looking forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
You have an entourage, don't you? You brought some guests?
Yes, absolutely. My daughter Naomi Estelle, my six-year-old daughter, my beautiful nieces, and Naomi's beautiful too, Bailey and Olivia, seven and nine, my loving sister, my biggest cheerleader Tiffany, and my only, my favorite brother, my only brother-in-law, Shavis. A very special shout-out to my mother, who has been a leading example of what it really looks like to be an involved and engaged parent, and is really the wind beneath my wing. So, thank you.
All right. Well, welcome to all our new administrators. It's a pleasure to have you. And, Mr. Chairman, for the next item, I am pleased to direct your attention, for everyone to direct their attention to the screen for our Henrico Highlight Video. And this month, we are putting the spotlight on 10 principals who are in new positions this year, and I know that you will feel their Henrico County pride as they share their excitement in their own words about the 2019-2020 school year.
Good morning. There's nothing like being a principal on the first day of school. It was just a wonderful experience. And so when I was greeting students on the very first day, I was really looking at them individually and trying to make connections with them from day one. And that's just been our theme for this year, is just really connecting and looking at each individual student and their needs and how we can meet them this school year.
Proud Panther born, Panther bred, proud '96 graduate, proud principal right now. It's surreal coming back to the same building you used to walk the halls in. I still remember to this day getting off the bus at the bus ramp and coming up, and it's just this sea of people. It was like, oh, wow, what have I got myself into? The opposite happened on Tuesday, when I'm standing at the top of the bus ramp, looking at the kids coming up toward me. And it was like, okay, what can I do to make them feel differently than how I felt? When you said good morning, shook as many hands. I knew I probably shook over 1,000 hands that morning. I mean, that's something that I didn't experience on my first day at Hermitage, but I wanted to make sure our students experienced that from me.
Good morning. How are you? Morning, guys? Welcome back.
It was amazing to know that I'm the principal of the building and to be able to welcome students back to the building, to welcome the community back into the building, was definitely a different level of excitement. We have a lot of walkers here, a lot of parents who are dropping off in the morning. So just being outside in the morning and being able to meet and greet our parents and students as they're coming into the building has been a great way to get to know the community.
It's so nice to meet you.
I really feel very fortunate that my career has been with Henrico County from start to finish, so my first year of teaching through principalship. And so I feel like one of the beautiful things about being in Henrico is the network of support and the opportunities for leadership and the guidance along the way. And I feel like that's been instrumental to help me get me to my goal, which is to be here.
Having started out at Knuckles Farm, moving to Johnson, and then coming full circle around to Shady Grove gives me so much more tools to deal with and to support the students here and the teachers here. But what I've found out is, every single school, like every single school, there is no school like Colonial Trail. It is unique, and it's amazing in its own way. So I'm using all my experiences from all those other schools to make it happen here at the Trail.
What's been really awesome is being able to stay in the same community and being able to work with a lot of the families and students who have gone through Holman, where I was principal before, and now re-establishing those relationships here has been awesome. The students are a lot taller now and bigger than they were in middle school, but, you know, kids are kids. And our goal is to make sure that they're successful, and that's what we do, whether they're 6th graders or they're 12th graders.
I didn't think about the wealth of knowledge I was going to bring back to the middle school setting, but it actually gave me a chance to see how things were done in elementary school and see the foundational pieces that students needed. And now I always have that to reflect on. So it adds to my, I guess, my arsenal of empathy to be able to say, these are some situations that may have occurred, but now think about how we can fix it. It's been great to have that experience and then come back to middle school.
Well, what's new for us this year is a new schedule, and so that's allowing us to really kind of shift instruction even more towards a deeper learning model and focus on the Henrico learner profile because we have time in our classes to do that. But our focus is on what's happening, where it matters, in the classroom between teacher and student.
It's special because of the faculty and the students, I think. I was here starting July 15, and I met with close to 30 teachers who came in on their time in the summer to meet with me. I asked them one question, what's special about Holman? And family, teachers, and students were the top three answers. Learning is at the core of what they do, and they do it well together.
Before teachers came back, I invited anyone who wanted to, groups of teachers, grade-level teams, individuals, to come in and meet with me. I only had two questions of them. I wanted them to finish a sentence. "I love Donahoe because..." and then I'd drop three dots, and they would tell me all kinds of awesome things about it. And the general consensus was the sense of family, the sense of working together. So for me, I felt that, okay, this is the place for me. This is my fit. I finally found the place where I'm supposed to be, that I can call home, and I can be the servant leader to a group of people who I feel are very special and are ready to dig in, roll up their sleeves along with me, and do the job. And that's where we are.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and we're off to a great start, that's for sure. So, Mrs. Cock, would you read our mission statement for us, please?
Absolutely. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you very much. As the room gets a little less crowded, the next item on our agenda is the public forum. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to come to the podium to do so after we've finished that list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name, neighborhood, or school affiliation. Once you've finished speaking, we ask that you write your name and contact information on a sign-in form that's located on the table behind the microphone and check the box if you wish to be contacted by staff regarding your concerns. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have a four-minute time limit. The light will be green when you begin, and the yellow light means that you have one minute remaining. And we ask that you stop promptly when the light turns red out of recognition and respect for the other speakers. The school board is here tonight to hear from you. Speakers should speak directly to the school board. We will not be responding to speakers, but we appreciate your attendance here and providing your input, and we'll make sure that if you wish to have a follow-up, that someone does follow up with you. So I do not believe we had anyone sign up in advance. So are there members in the audience who would like to address the school board about a matter involving the division? Well, all right, very good. The opportunity was afforded. And I believe that unless there's someone, we'll move to the next item. Members of the board, the next item is approval of the minutes. We've had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor of approving the minutes indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Dr. Cashwell?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the first item, I'm recommending that the school board accept the $454.85 grant award from the Virginia Professional Educators Group to Tucker High School.
Thank you very much, members of the board. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that we accept the Virginia Professional Educators Grant Award. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted.
And the next item, 11.01. I am withdrawing my original recommendation as it was published on the agenda for further time to review the bylaws, and we'll be bringing those forward at another time for your consideration for approval.
Thank you.
All right. So then that moves us to the next items, which are consent items and therefore can be taken in a block. I'm requesting approval for the following: the acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the months ending July 31, 2019, and August 31, 2019; the acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services for the months ending July 31, 2019, and August 31, 2019; approval of pupil transportation employee appointments and releases; approval of personnel items; and approval of vocational and technical education foundation members.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and for the public, these matters have been presented in writing to the school board, and as the superintendent indicated, can be handled as a consent group item. Members of the board, is there a motion to adopt the consent items as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And that concludes the superintendent's business for tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Members of the board, is there any unfinished business that any school board member wishes to bring forward? Any new business?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pike.
I want to thank the Verona High School band and Dr. Cashwell for being at the Virginia State Capitol yesterday for a launch of Virginia's For Learning. They had the privilege of being conducted by the state superintendent, Dr. James Lane, yesterday. And they did an outstanding job in some warm temperatures. But I appreciate Dr. Cashwell being there, and I appreciate the Verona band and all that they did.
And thank you for representing the board there, Mr. Pike. We appreciate that as well. Anything else, board members? All right. So our next meeting is scheduled for October 10, beginning at 2 o'clock. That will be a work session. That time is subject to change based on need. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.